I'd like to welcome everybody to the zoning board of adjustment. My name is George Bailey and I'm going to be the temporary moderator until such time as we have all our members present and we have an election of officers at that time. So, that's the first statement. The second statement is that there is presently three voting members. It is your choice to postpone and continue with a continuance because we only have three, which you're entitled to have as five. It'll be your choice.
Well, what it is is because of the way the state statutes are set up, because it's a five-member board, you've got to be the majority of the board, not the majority of the members present. So, after you get a unanimous vote, you get an approval. If there was five members here, you could win, you could get your approval with a free-to-vote. So, they do give the applicant a chance to have other members here if they feel they might not get a unanimous vote. And that's the applicant's choice.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. I'm Farwell for the Adams Longshore Drive. I'd like to move forward.
Thank you, sir. All right, now if you'll please join me with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes, I'm gonna have, my next item is a roll call vote. It's intended a roll call vote. The Raymond Damaris is not present. George Bailey's present. So, Tracy Hardikoff.
Tracy Hardikoff, newly appointed and sworn in member.
Thank you.
Paul Thibodeau, present.
Let's see, I don't have him on. Here we go. And Mr. Thibodeau is our other member. As I had said earlier, I'd like to call case number.
Just walked in. Sorry, Dave. Thibodeau.
Hi there.
Now, even though we have four, it's still, it's still your choice and we'll get started. The first case I'm going to call is case number 103-64-GR-22. It's for a variance. Would the applicant like to step forward, please?
I'm sorry, who? I'm not sure of my number. I'm with Longshore Drive. Cynthia Adams, I don't know the number.
Yes, that is the number and you are the first one. You hit that right on the head.
I'm memorizing my number. I have an easel in this land. Did I set up here or how was my best? You put it right there, right where you're standing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Everybody likes the magic.
The way, the way that we perform this is we have you make your presentation first and then as we go by each section, the board members will be asking questions.
All right, very good.
Do we have a copy of that material?
Yeah.
Was a little.
By the way, those pins when you close them down.
Thank you.
Use those.
Can you remove your hat, please? I'd like to ask you to, thank you. I just don't, I don't think hats are part of the, I don't want to be digging in your stuff. So, when we elect a new chair, it'll change.
Okay, so I'm here representing Cynthia Adams, who is not able to make it tonight. I did submit as part of my application a letter of authorization which is notarized, allowing me to take over her behalf. But it's in the file, I have it up here if you'd like it. This lot is on Longshore Drive. It is a .29 meter lot. That's 103-64. I initially done work for city. We have approved a case that we've done for this two-bedroom residence. And then the contractor was moving forward and found out that he could not build the building because the building setbacks overlap. That forced us to vote for this board for a variance for sideline setbacks. We are proposing a 14-by-66 two-bedroom house. It is within 26.2 feet of the West Philly property line. And it is within 16.9 feet of the Easterly property line, where 30 feet is required. So, we are requesting the difference of those two, 13.1 from one, 13 from the other. I also did provide photographs. This is an undeveloped lot currently. This is screened. Now, as you can see, quite a bit of topography out there. We didn't really do any ledge broaching, none of any ledge. We think it's gonna be reasonable. I submitted pictures of trees. So, thank God that's nothing. So, that, that is what we are proposing this evening. Do you have any questions?
Would you please go through items one through five, please, starting on page three, please?
Yep. Okay. Special conditions exist that little enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant if defined under the applicable law. There is no complaint right now. The 30 feet overlap, the property is 56 feet wide, or the boundary setbacks overlap. There's no buildable area there that can inform. Granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The ordinance is to allow for a single-family residential house. That is what we are proposing. I thought it was the new residence will, a variance would allow for a single-family residence to build on a lot, think of one. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property value. Don't believe so. A new residence will enhance the neighborhood and enhance surrounding value. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Granting the variance would allow the land, or the use of land as it is intended to be known for a single-family residence, allow for a single-family residence to build on a small modest under this existing law. I'm doing especially those, those are the five factors.
Thank you. Paul, would you like to start off with any questions, please?
Is that a stick build, that 14-by?
I'm unsure of how it, how it's going to be built. No, it's gonna be crossing the ground. I haven't received plans of it. Family resident.
You have the foundation under, it's gonna be on post of?
No, the foundation under, concrete foundation under.
Yeah, you know.
Dave?
Is there any zoning for mobile homes?
They're allowed by anywhere in town, regulations other than the town center.
Hardikoff?
So, the Westalia butter is, appears to be from the photo that I'm looking at, a mobile home in and of itself. How structure on the other side of this property designed? Is it got a full foundation also manufactured home or it's a stick build?
I believe it's a stick build on the east of these.
Okay.
It is, there's a lot of topography, it's probably a bit higher. You can, I think if you look through the picture, you can, yeah, that's, that is the picture three, 0-3, the corner of the body.
Can you point to which well would be on the property? And can you also point to where the nearest body of water is in something here?
There is a wetland. I know there's a wetland though back.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And it can be on the slab, can reach the, thank you. Usually when you see a 14-by-64, most of the time a manufactured home, I'm not giving, someone could stick build it, but either way, still comply with the building. That's the point.
Thank you.
Does the board have any more questions, please? Tracy, please.
The driveway material would be?
At this point it'll be gravel. But it's very non-promising that it won't be paid later.
Let's go start out in front of the whole section.
That's it.
Did you get your answers to any other questions?
I don't have any, no.
Is there anybody here to speak against this project request? Is there anybody to speak for?
Anybody participating virtually and would like to speak up through the Teams platform, you can raise your hand if this being, next on mute. Thank you. Unmute yourself, raise your hand to indicate your intention or comment on this application. Yes, stars, six on your phone. I see anything here, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Give it a minute.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, we'll close that aspect of it. Now, sir, you had your hand up, but I'd already asked for comments for or against.
I'm representing Longshore Lot Association, just extending this lot.
Please come to the, please come to the front, please. Does the board object?
We sent an email and, last night, and we were hoping that it's been received.
An email was received. They were, had an issue with the association dues not being paid to date. That would be addressed by the select board and they come in for their access because of the private road, because the requirement on the private road to either create your own entity to where you're gonna guarantee to maintain the road or join an association. So, that would be the proper thing for that because this board doesn't address those types of issues. Their issues here are just for the compliance only.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, I will close the public comment part of the application, applicant's time and go to the board. Comments for the board?
I don't have any comments on it. No problem with it.
Hey?
I don't have any.
All right, anybody want to take a motion?
I would make a motion for the acceptance of the variance for the sideline setbacks as illustrated on the Farewell Engineering Service blueprints or case number 103-64-GR-22-VAR for acceptance by the ZDAB.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Have a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Bailey, aye. Thank you. You will have approval.
Just, that was, that was, she, she made a motion to, for acceptance of the variance application. I, I was looking for approval.
I apologize. Changed the word acceptance to approval.
Thank you, that's, I just, I've been stuck up on smaller things.
That's okay, sir.
I hope you have a four-wheel drive.
That was good, you stuck on. I did it. Come, thank you, I'll stick around. Yeah, you want a job? You want a job?
Yeah.
I understand that.
All right, the next case to come before us is case number 121-30-GR-22. It's a variance. Is Mr. Townsend available?
I'm breaking down.
Please have a seat, sir.
I'd like that man to represent me. He knows what he's talking about.
Well, you must have filled out the paperwork itself.
Actually, the paperwork had filled out down at the town hall. I don't have a copy if you ask me. I don't have a copy of that. Correct. So, you, you can, you can help me out with that. I'm green there.
All right, what, what we usually do here is when you come before us, you state the reasons why you're asking for the variance and then the board will in turn ask you questions. If you have anything you want to submit, you may submit it. The other question that has not been answered, are you willing to accept four members of the board to hit, for this hearing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
And I do have three copies for the board of other items. Would you care for those now?
Which items do you have?
Yeah, I'll accept them. Yes, please.
You can share these, just some insinuating circumstances, some history. John, John's pretty much aware of everything that goes on out there.
All right, sir, if you will please start on page four. Thank you very much. I'm new at this. We'll get started. Sir, just been brought to my attention that we would like for you to start with the reasoning for this and then we'll go on to the page four.
Okay, what we have is a non-conforming lot in size and we're, we're applied for a variance to place a home within the setbacks that's conforming to and consistent with the surrounding properties. And that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
So, what we're, we're proposing to do is to get approval, acceptance for a 38-by-28 residential, single-family home on a non-conforming 100-by-100 lot, which is consistent with the other lot. Actually, this is a larger than, larger lot than the other, other properties that have similar, that have been approved for variance requirements. This home, the way it's positioned on here, we have reasons for positioning this and sizing it's consistent with the, with the home in the neighborhood. It meets all the setbacks as far as the L and the septic, does not need any variances, any changes, any, any special exceptions for those. The Rosemary Lane, that's adjacent to that, is a private road. That's, that's been a problem for a long time. John Hawkins is very familiar with the work that we've done out there and adjacent property on the other side of Rosemary, which was a 1934 cottage that we, we spent 10 months converting into a beautiful, single-family home. And what we want to do is maintain the consistency and the quality of modern construction on this property that meets or exceeds any other abutting property and we can do that. If you look at the, the handout that I just gave you, it has blue and red sketch lines over the, the Berry survey sketch. Those blue and red lines, to be clear, those are sketches that I put in that was a, representing, to represent what could potentially be an advantage to Rosemary Lane in the future because Rosemary Lane has a press problem coming in and out of Al Road where the line of sight is, is pretty, pretty lousy. So, I proposed that by situating this home diagonally like it is, that would lend itself to have a future radius on the edge of Rosemary Lane in the future if it was, if it was accepted by the association there. The well is sketched on here, the septic system is sketched on there, those meet the state requirements. The home is also situated for solar south, so we could add solar panels. If you turn to page three of my handout, you'll see that there's a quick claim deed on the Ivan Fekety, Rosemary Lane Road. There's been a lot of problems. I think everybody that's been in this town knows there's an awful lot of problems with multiple surveys done in this.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Page three.
The one I just handed out? I'm sorry, they don't, they're not numbered, but the ones I just handed out.
Is it a quick claim deed?
The quick claim, yeah. If you look.
We have documents here that, I don't have any of this.
No, he just brought that tonight. It was given permission by the moderator.
It wasn't the, it wasn't the original package.
Is this a part of order? I mean, part of what we're supposed to be?
I was gonna say.
If you don't want to accept it and you make a motion and it won't be accepted, look for the original package.
The concept here, I think, is what the issue is. There's some contention to where the, you know, you have to give these to the setbacks, you gotta agree to those two property lines being to the ones that are coming from. So, there's gonna be information presented by Mr. Townsend tonight and then by some of the abutters on what those.
And what a, you know, property line. That before we address this?
That would be my opinion, but if I, if you're hearing it, you think. I'm not an attorney and I try not to be one, but.
Yeah, I don't play one on.
Oh, we're being asked to vote on a, on a setback file of variance that may or may not be accurate.
That's correct. So, we have to determine tonight.
My feeling is I would like to.
That's not true. You're being.
Excuse me, sir. Just a minute.
My feeling is I'd like to see that resolved, determine whether or not there's a setback variance requirement.
Does, does anybody have, John, does anybody have a, the latest survey plot planned for us?
What is that?
The one that says this is not.
And we're not disputing it. This argument's mute.
You're not disputing.
We're not disputing this boundary.
Okay, that's the only, the only thing we have is, just, the only thing we have is the one that he handed in to us tonight and, Dave, if you have a problem with it, you can motion that we go for.
I think it might be worth hearing the information together, but he had to make a, a decision. Because the end of the, the first person who wanted it is the one that's accurate because the first one that we handled afterwards, if they've already deeded to someone, they don't have to, someone else. That's that one, which is in the two different survey plans from the two different areas.
Dave, would you mind withholding that motion until after we have further input?
Right.
Is that, is that acceptable to you?
It is. I have a motion, though.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't, we don't go over the deeds. We have no purview over them. We don't, I mean, this is over our heads, way over our heads in order to be able to make a decision, talk about, say, yes, you're right or no, you're not right. So, I, I would personally not like to, I'd make an emotion that we do not hear deeds and any discrepancies in the deeds.
That was only for representation to demonstrate a, an argument that is not going to be argued.
Just.
Just to make sure that every niceness.
It's not going to be argued.
Okay. Dave, I'll be, Paul, be, uh, to.
There's a motion on the table.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I second it.
If you have a second, we can have a discussion on that motion.
Okay.
My, my motion is to not review or discuss any deeds that are part of the application.
Mr. Moderator, any questions?
Certainly, please do.
Contained in the packets that we've have received is there an actual boundary survey that has been certified by a survey?
I, I will say to you, not to my knowledge, but I will further ask John.
Do you see one?
Thank you.
Do you submit an actual boundary survey that has been certified by a survey?
Yes.
Besides the one that reads "not for boundary purposes"?
If you look at the bottom right-hand side, if you look at the bottom right-hand side above the, it says, the box, see, it says right there, this is not for a boundary survey. So, do you have another?
No, actually, that is, that is Berry survey.
Yes, it is Berry survey, sir, but he has made a statement on it. This is not a boundary survey.
Well, you know.
And, and so, this is all you've handed in, then we don't have a boundary survey.
So, that clarifies a question for the motion and the settlement.
Okay. So, we're not gonna discuss that. Is anybody wanting to motion for a continuance? We should hear the information first or do you want to motion for a continuance of this case until we get the boundary? What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, we vote for a continuance based on.
And I would second.
Getting a boundary survey.
All right, I have a motion. They, they don't want it.
I think we, I think we need to be looking at the material to hear the information, sir.
We don't have a boundary survey for this property. How can we make a decision?
So, we have a motion before us. We have a second by Hardikoff. Is there any other further discussion?
Yeah, my discussion is I wouldn't support that. I, I think that the abutters coming out here tonight, if they don't want, if they will talk, want to talk about anything except survey, surveys or deeds, then, then I think we should hear that. That's my opinion.
But my concern is.
I agree that I cannot vote on this. I agree that, with that.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's, that's what we have.
The motion is to continue with, though, right?
Motion is continue for next meeting and ask the individual to propose this with a boundary survey.
So.
That's, that's.
Right, so.
I just threw in for discussion.
Wanted to open it up for the people on the.
I just wanted to open it up to the public to discuss.
Mr. Moderator, if they would like to discuss something, there's an abutters that doesn't.
Hey, would you, would you, would, would the board members go on holding this motion until we hear, hear the information and then we can vote on that at the end for continuance?
I'm modify it as said, my motion to allow them to speak.
So, do we want to talk about deeds or surveys?
Talk about deeds and surveys.
Then that'll be it. So, sir, if you have any other information you would like to present to us, would you please do that, sir?
I'll second David's motion.
We already have a second.
Okay, then.
I just want to make a little comment before you guys vote. Because you opened a public hearing, I think there's responsibility to take comments from the abutters that you want to speak. And I think if you restrict the hearing where you're not taking testimony, you might cross the line that you don't want to cross.
That's why I voted. I, I have a nomination to continue this meeting until we have a boundary survey, as simple as that. That's kind of, I think I want to just keep it at that.
So, to clarify, John, I'm gonna ask, to clarify what you just said is we cannot, we cannot agree to not talk about surveys and deeds if we allow the public to speak.
If you have a discrepancy on that, you can talk, you can hash them. Technically, the whole reason why the abutters get to speak is they might have information in the area that you should know in order to make a decision that we might not have as part of the town vetting or the applicant brought forward. That's usually the reason why you would have an abutty.
Okay, so if, if, if we, if we move, let's rescind the second and rescind the motion until later. Now we can move forward, listen to everybody with the exception of deeds and whatever, we can move forward, listen to their information and then the motion can be brought forward again. That way there, as John is saying, then we'll hear the, the abutters that are here and so that when we do get the survey, we can take the information they've given us and move forward that way.
Okay. You want, you want to?
With, with Ms. Hardikoff, we send her a second.
Um.
Her second is for a continuance.
Mr. Moderator, my only, my only concern with that is we're having a discussion without the material in front of us to actually, I mean.
I, I.
If we can do that appropriately, then I will rescind the second and we will proceed with listening.
Okay, same.
You misunderstood my comment a little bit. If you want to say that you're not taking, if there's a discrepancy on the deeds in that whole bit and you want that to be ironed out through a stamp survey plan or whatever and you don't want to have testimony on that, then on the decision on that, you have a right to. So that, that plan, the other issues that are known in the area.
I think, I, I think that before we take the rescind, John, if we continue this, the applicant knows he doesn't have a full package and he may come visit with yourself or with Barbara or with Ms. Vanessa.
More than likely, they will.
They can come down and discuss it with you and then they can make another presentation to us on time to be put on the docket for next month.
Correct.
All right, so now before us, we have a motion for a continuance of this until we receive such information. I'll ask for a roll call vote, starting at the end of the table, please.
Aye.
I, I heard. I'm a little lost. What, what's the motion?
The motion is for a continuance until next month to allow the applicant an opportunity to provide the necessary material that will allow us to move forward with his request.
And that's excluding hearing the public tonight.
That's correct.
I vote no.
Bailey, aye. It's a three-to-one vote. This motion will be continued, this application will be continued until next month. Thank you.
The public tonight?
No. All right. No, no. Seriously, sir, we, we're still, we're still having the meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sorry for anybody's inconvenience, but we need all the information.
Sorry to waste your time. And we don't know.
Sir, we have an incomplete packet. And it would not behoove us or your to put all of our times together. So we will look for another packet for, and come in here, a complete packet for next month that we can review prior to the meeting. It, it is not for us to do. The next meeting is at what time? They've got a good idea.
Seven o'clock on the twentieth.
Seven o'clock on the twentieth. Will you please come up here to the, to the front, please?
I'm sorry.
I'm going to let him speak.
Public comments, there's a second section of public comments.
No, not, not here.
ZDA.
There is none here.
Can, can I make a motion to reopen public comment, please?
There is none.
I'd like to make a motion to open public comment. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
May, may we have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so go ahead. Please speak.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the consideration. President of the Rosemary Lane Rose, uh, Road Association, which, uh, this applicant, Richard Townsend, has asked to get a driveway off of road. We have concerns that we would like to share. And like to, um, present some letters that were written to the town of Barrington to, uh, four different departments from our attorney, uh, against allowing a driveway permit off of Rosemary Lane, and I would like to present that to you as part of your.
You may present that to, uh, John or to Mr. Connor. They will take that, Vanessa, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm going to put it in the file. I'm new.
Present that to her, it'll be added, it'll be added to the packet. You may present that to her.
Okay, so the board will get to see it.
It'll be put in the packet. Yes, it will be. Just give it to her and she'll take care of it.
You should have already received copies of this back in October.
Excuse me, you can give her the packet and then please go back over there.
We can supply you a copy.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
So we also have a problem with the Berry surveying plan.
That's, that's not to be discussed now because that, that has been set for the packet.
I'm just stating that.
Comment.
It's a comment.
Yep, it's just a comment.
Thank you. You accept it?
Okay. Um, the legal address for, uh, the property that he's actually purchased from the town, because the town. Is Hall Road. It's Rosemary Lane. It has a Hall Road number. Therefore, we feel the driveway should be coming off of Hall Road and not off of Rosemary Lane. Where we've had problems with Mr. Townsend on the other corner lot at the top of our hill that he, uh, redid the house up there, built in the lot, brought up the level.
Excuse me, sir, let's, let's stay with this particular application, please.
Getting there.
I like.
I'm getting there. So both of the top corner lots right now are owned by Mr. Townsend. His first house that he did impacted our road. We had washout, had problems with the road. Uh, the road has never been the same. And, um, it is, it is a problem today. And, um, the lot that he's asking for a building permit on right now is a very low-lying lot. It, it sits way down off of Hall Road and it would have to be filled in. We are seriously concerned about the impacts of filling this lot in and where does that water go? And how does it affect our road where we're already getting hit on this side? It's a private road. Town does not maintain this road. The residents, the 10 houses on this road are the people that have to put the money into the association to fix the road because of the issues that were created. Seriously, um, asking the board to consider not even allowing something there because the property is so low right now and it's wet and it drains naturally in a flow that goes into a drainage system that we had to explicitly put in and was approved by, um, the previous road agent. And, um, we have, um, also expressed these concerns with Mark Merle, the current road agent. He is aware of our situation. We are 10 houses. We don't have a lot of money in our association. We can't afford to redo our drains and reconnect everything and try to fight the water battles that we're already fighting. We're already having problems and, um, I want that to be brought to light. There's also, um, let's see. There's also concerns, um, about, um, the egress. So he mentioned that, uh, the egress, um, is to help the road and help people that live on the road get out. This was brought to our attention. The driveway, uh, access was also brought to our attention. And he asked us to get a vote together and vote on a package that he put together that we presented to all the members of our association. The bylaws, we vote on it, and votes were, we don't want the egress, we don't want the driveway, we don't want a house there. Or concerns that are all listed out in the letter that went to Chris McGyver, to John Huckins, uh, I think, uh, yep, planning department and zoning. I think it was, uh, Driscoll and, uh, somebody else. It was done in October, so I don't.
We got them a long time ago.
Yeah, October. Yeah, it was, it was back in October. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And it was, it was, it was done by our lawyer back when he presented us with his, uh, case to our association to ask us to approve a driveway on our road. And also to create an egress and move the mailboxes around and do a bunch of other things. And all the ideas that were presented to our association were completely, it has no items from members, and it was 100% unanimous not to allow anything to happen that's going to affect our road and have there because maintain it, it costs us money, and we don't feel that. Address is Hall Road. So. Concerns from the Rosemary Lane Association. And I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of this. This isn't the first time that I've heard this. And I wanted you guys to know that, you know, this was presented to us back in October to be voted on, and I want you to consider that when it comes time to take a look at this because our road, uh, boundaries supposedly are, um, I, I was told by Berry surveying that the boundaries out there may not be 100% accurate for any of the lots, including the road.
Do you have a statement from Mr. Berry, uh, to that effect?
I.
If you do, would you please include it in your packet?
I, I have a verbal statement that was given to myself and I believe one other gentleman.
Sir, I'm asking, do you have a written statement from Mr. Berry stating that, please?
I, I do not.
Okay, if you could get one, it would sure be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you. Please.
So thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and thank you for letting me talk, letting it on public.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Lucy Pantano. And some of you, I think I met, and the, uh, boundary line came in question with the campground. Some, I met some of you. No, I will, but I just want to say thank you. I, I had the first opportunity that I see the zoning board again because it really got to solve wonderful. Kat Green came to me last summer, and he will do everything possible in due diligence of the zoning board. So I want to thank you. Something good.
Could you tell us your address, please?
It's 168 Hall Road.
Thank you.
And, and now if you have to bear with me for, I have to go back 22 years. We're living 30 years on that lot, on 168 Hall Road. But 22 years ago, my husband was diagnosed with cancer and he died. So between 2019 and 2020, 21, you can imagine, this has been, uh, David built his houses. And of course we were invited, but we, we didn't. We didn't do anything about it because you can imagine, here you are. I lost my husband. It was the last thing that was on my mind to go to a town hall meeting or to go to the zoning board and say, by the way, it's not. I just, it's not an excuse. I'm just telling you what happened, okay? So time goes by and then in 2007, my older son says to me, you know, you really should do something about this. So I did hire David Vincent, the surveyor, was in 2007. And he said, oh dear God, he said, that David Newhall, he went into your property. And he, you know, he said, you need a lawyer. And I, a lawyer, when I hear the word, I said, I don't have the money and I didn't know what to do. So I did go to Dover, get a lawyer. We get wrote, uh, a, a letter, sworn back, but David, I understand today we, we're talking, you know, I think maybe he knows what went wrong at that time, and the survey was done by Berry. So we have three surveys. My son, my younger son is with me. We could show the surveys to you. One was done in 1975 by a, with the Moore family, where the property line goes straight down, okay? The next was done by Berry themselves in 1990, 96, property line goes straight down. Always down, but we have the maps with us. Suddenly, in 2000, when David Newhall wants to build the houses, the, the property line is wrong. Now they can approach not, was supposed to be eight feet, but now it turns out to be 18 feet. So very obviously then in, in, in 2007, uh, you know, when I got the lawyer and I, and Vincent said, don't, don't do it, yeah. I passed, and I didn't get a lawyer, and I said, but I want you guys to understand that I never, never once did I agree with that bound, with that boundary line. Never, not once. And we are now back where we are today. And last summer, I was out in my driveway. And, uh, Mr. Townsend comes up to me and he said.
Please, please move to the camp.
Your driveway is mine. I want you to know that. Half of your driveway is mine. And I looked up to him. I said, really? I said, how is that? No, and he said, then you, you better don't be stupid enough when, when, you know, David Newhall wants to give you the right of way and you don't be stupid, you better take it. Right? No, 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 no. And I, and I said, wait a minute. Half of your driveway is mine. Now what? 30 years, well, there are 30 years.
I appreciate you giving us these comments.
That's it. But now if, if it is conditioned that David wants to build a house with half of my driveway, the answer is no.
Thank you much for your comments.
Answer is no. I'm 86 years old. I don't know if I'm still here next year. Okay?
I would hope.
But that's all we worked for. That's all we worked for. 30 years. It's not that easy to be done, that somebody come and says now, half of your driveway is mine. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Hope to see you next month. I would like, I'm going to close public comment. Please come up forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Terry Stibbert. I live at 160 Hall Road. I'm on the other side of Rosemary from the property that, uh, George Townsend. So the Hall Road, Rosemary, he's on one corner. I'm on the other corner of Hall.
Is this the property previously opened?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes. So this is one that he referred to as the, uh, fishing cottage that he redid as, uh, modern. Um, I don't want to talk about boundary line. I'll start with that. Well, I want to, uh, just call attention to the fact that the, the proposal I house to be diagonally placed on the, which I'm in favor of, number one. It, uh, makes the visual lines of visual between lots and homes on the, on the lot better. So I don't look in there when they will look at my. So our privacy is persisted and, and consistent. Favor of the diagonal placement. It's more efficient use of the land that's available. And I'll, and that makes a lot of sense. I'm also in favor of putting the house there. Um, it'll increase the value of the land. It's an empty lot now with, uh, some. It was, uh, a city-owned, looks like scrapyard kind of thing. So, uh, in my opinion, it's gone through big improvement visually. Richard Townsend bought the property because it was just ladder and scaffolding and, and, uh, big trees that always concerned me about coming down. Into anything. So visually, it seems to be better maintained. So two things, I'm in favor of diagonal thing, that makes sense. Two, in favor of the house going in there because it'll improve the neighborhood, improve the, uh, value of, of real estate in general with the other. Someone else to pay my share of tax has been me quite long.
Please, please wait your turn.
Any other public comments?
No, I, I think that's it. Thank you. I appreciate your time and attention.
And is there anybody virtually that is interested and participated in the meeting and interested in making a public comment? Why raise your hand or unmute yourself, waiting to be recognized by the moderator?
All right, sir, please. Would you come forward and, and give us your name and your address, please?
Thank you, sir. My name's Steve Slavensky, and I must say, I'm very impressed with this meeting because this is going far beyond what is normally done in a, in a zoning board of assessment. You only have to go through those four or five questions from the Supreme Court case and you determine whether somebody has, has, whether it's going to be a hardship, things like that. So my, my concern here is that there are more than one survey here. You need to know. I've seen three or four of them. That's what I was, I was. To see Pantano, just to look at the surveys and the boundary. I'm not here for the application of Mr. Townsend. So I think you did the smart thing. It's prudent to wait till you get all your information, including all the surveys, and determine which one is accurate. If it can't be determined, then it might have to be handled in a quiet title action with the court, things like that, before you make a final decision. That's just my, my, my thought on that. So when you look at these surveys, they see one shows a straight line, another one shows don't rise in Rosemary Lane. We're not, we're not going to talk about the surveys.
Excuse me.
Mr. Moderator, we, we want to talk about both lines.
No, we're not going to talk about any. We're just taking comments right now. And, and we appreciate the fact that you are representing them there. And then once we have made a continuation, the simple fact, we're waiting for a boundary line to be done.
Right.
At such time when the boundary line is presented to us, your recommendations will be part of our considerations to go forward now.
Right. That's fine. I just, just hearing everybody talk, I figured, I think you made the right decision on because there's at least three about this. That's all I'll say on that.
Thank you, sir.
Right. And thank you for, and what's important also, I also do mediation. And what's very important is what you just did. You got to make sure Mr. Townsend sees those letters. Everything's an opportunity to respond. It's a process and that's what we want to see.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I really appreciate it. Excuse me. Excuse me, sir. You have a comment you'd like to make? You have one minute, please?
Is absolutely correct. Copy lines were straight. I'm not talking about that. I'm just these documents were not to end the argument. They were to represent I am here to make life better for people that had arguments by saying, we can just go with the flow. Go with it because we can make it happen and get rid of any argument. That's what I do. I fix people's problems. There are nothing but problems out there as far as.
Excuse me, sir. You, you dress your comments to the board, please?
Sorry. As far as the road is concerned, since 1934, the person that just testified that I created problems since 1934, you all know, uh, Loretta Gretschel. It's her family property, Loretta Gretschel, their family property, Bogaty, okay? Since 1934, every year that road washed out till I fixed it. It has not washed out once since. The accountant that represents people up there comes to me, my accountant says, never seen anything like it. John's witnessed it himself. Okay? People in the town.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? So I'm going to fix problems for everybody. And there's been a lot, there's 160 page, uh, extrapolation filed with the city, all the work that I've done.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to close public com. Sir, do you have anything else that has not been discussed? I will give you one minute. You will be the last individual for under the public comments as we're exceeding 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
New material.
New material. Yes. So, um, I've lived on Rosemary Lane for 22 years. His comment is totally incorrect. I have.
Sir, this is not the time to discuss it. Do you have more information you want to give us?
I, I do.
We, we have, let me, let me, let me finish and explain something to you. Beyond my better judgment, what the board has decided to allow public comments to come at the end of this meeting after, we have already stated that we're continuing until next month. So if you have some new information that has not been stated besides accusations, please, please present it. We're, we're not taking accusations out. Maybe next week, well, next month.
Yep. I'd just like to say that we installed over $8,000 worth of drainage drains and had our road all good. We had it all working before his work happened at the other property.
It's accusations again, sir.
Across the road. I'm just, I'm just making that as a statement. And the, the other statement that I would like to ask is, um, where Rosemary, the owned, uh, association, we were not notified and where a butter and a driveway is being asked of Rosemary Lane, we were not notified.
Sir, let me, let, let me stop you. Let me stop you right now. In your prior presentation, you have made a notice to us that it does not have the correct address because they're using Hall Road instead of the other ones. So because it was not on, the Hall Road was used, that is the reason why the association was not notified. Now that we have this new information, it's going to be corrected and it will be sent out.
Actually, that's not quite true.
What?
By notice by state statutes, um, abuddies are notified and across the road are notified. You don't notify the road associations as part of the state statute.
I learned something right there. Thank you. We both, we both learned something this.
That was my question, you know?
The answer is no.
Had to let us.
No. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Your minute has expired.
I have, I have one.
Your minute has expired, sir. We'll save it for next meeting. Thank you very much.
You got other information you can present.
That's right. Thank you. Moving, moving.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and I was not being abrupt with you to be rude. I was just being the chair and moving it along and to let you know that we'll take care of it once that's taken care of.
Sure.
So please accept my step that if I have, if I offended you, I apologize ahead of time, but I did not do it with an intent to offend you.
I understand.
I did that for your one minute. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Moving on, we have the approval of minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, February 16th.
And I will recuse myself because I was not with the meeting.
For a second.
Okay. Thank you very much. A roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me, it's Derek. And please make note that, uh, Ms. Hatakov has, uh, abstained or has, uh, recused herself because this is her first night. We have a vote for Derek.
We determined to do the, um.
We, we did, we did do your motion to continue the meeting.
Oh, no, no. We, that was before.
No, we're not. That, it, we, prior to your arrival, we, we said, I said that we would have a full board before us. Will everybody present?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
No, no, don't have to. I said, have to swallow.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
Sorry, um, sorry I was late, George. I
No, no.
Literally just flew in from Florida.
So what was you doing down there?
Yeah. I was on vacation.